Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Here.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross? Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. Are there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilman Sharlin.
All right. I'm excited to honor one of our, not just the, not just the business that has been around for a while, but a business that actually helps our office out a lot whenever we're in, kind of in dire need for a printing or anything like that. We always go to you and, and not just a business on the street, but also a real leader in, and Rebecca has been vitally important with the South Side Chamber and the turnaround that we're having on East Carson Street, and we wouldn't be able to do it without you. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas Rebecca Kasevich and Alan Juno met in nineteen ninety-five while working for an advertising agency, and whereas working together ignited their, ignited a shared vision that led to the founding of their own printing business in nineteen ninety-nine, and whereas Copies at Carson has revolutionized the proofing process by establishing a digital proofing system that has become an essential resource for local Pittsburgh advertising agencies, and whereas their resilience has been tested through pivotal moments in history, including Y-two-K, September eleventh attacks, the dot-com burst, the two thousand, or two thousand nine G-twenty-seventh, and the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and whereas the, whereas through these challenges Rebecca and Alan have, have adeptly embraced technological advancements, ensuring their printing practices remain at the forefront of the industry, and whereas their dedication to the quality services fostered a loyal customer base, demonstrating the enduring success of a mom-and-pop shop in our community, and whereas the twenty-fifth anniversary of their East Carson Street location on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-four marks not just a celebration of their business, but a testament to their commitment to the South Side community, and whereas Rebecca, an active member in the South Side Chamber of Commerce, has been a steadfast supporter of the South Side community and, and numerous fundraisers, including the South Side Soup Contest, and as a resident of D-two, Teresa's not here yet, she is deeply engaged with neighbors on the mound, and Alan is a passion advocate for the Pittsburgh cycling scene, shares their commitment to supporting meaningful projects across the city, often championing causes close to the, close to their staff's hearts, and whereas during the pandemic, their printing services played a crucial role in honoring local high school graduates with yard signs, as well as contributing to a special Halloween segment for Good Morning America at Children's Hospital. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh celebrates Rebecca and Alan for their entrepreneurial spirit, their unwavering commitment to the community, and their invaluable contributions they have made through their business, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby declares October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to be Copies at Carson Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you for this wonderful honor, Bob, for sponsoring us for this, and Council for approving it as well. This city's been very good to us, especially the South Side, and we couldn't do it without the support of the community and people such as yourselves. Thank you very much.
And if all those here for Space Week would please come forward.
Is this you two? Don't you have like three folks today?
What I will, what I will say before reading the proclamation is, I've learned much more about space in the last couple of years than I ever thought I would, and what I've also learned is that when we think of sort of the space industry, it's an extremely robust industry that entails lots of different types of jobs, and so all those who may be interested should certainly take a look at it, and it's also a growing part of our local economy. So I want to thank you all for being here with us this morning. Whereas Pittsburgh is an emerging space city with contributions from commercial space and robotics companies and universities like Carnegie Mellon University and the University of Pittsburgh that have made significant advancements in robotics, astronomy, and space science. Whereas the Allegheny Observatory, located in Riverview Park, is one of the major historic astronomical research institutions in the world. Whereas Astrobotic conducted the first-ever U.S. commercial lunar lander mission, Peregrine Mission One, on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four from Cape Canaveral, Florida, a spacecraft that was designed, manufactured, and controlled from Astrobotic's Pittsburgh headquarters. And whereas the Iris Rover, developed at Carnegie Mellon University to collect scientific images for geological science, was the first American student-built lunar rover to operate in space as a payload on Astrobotic's Peregrine Mission One. And whereas Carnegie Science Center, home to the Buell Planetarian Observatory, inspires and entertains the Pittsburgh community by connecting science and technology with everyday life through exhibits like Mars and The Next Giant Leap. And whereas the Moonshot Museum, located in the city's Manchester neighborhood, is the only museum in Pennsylvania dedicated to space career readiness. And whereas Space Bar, a locally-owned and operated space-themed cocktail lounge in Pittsburgh, integrates space culture into Pittsburgh's vibrant social scene. And whereas the Pittsburgh area is the birthplace of astronauts J. App, Mike Fink, Stephen Frick, Terry Hart, Warren Woody Holberg, James Erwin, and Judith Resnick, along with NASA Flight Director Heather Rorick. And whereas the Keystone Space Collaborative will hold its annual conference, October twenty-eighth through twenty-ninth in Pittsburgh, is a nonprofit organization with a mission to support and serve the growing space industry in Ohio, Pennsylvania, and West Virginia. And whereas the inaugural Spaceburg Festival, to celebrate Pittsburgh's contribution to space science, robotics, and science fiction, will take place on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in Market Square. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October nineteenth to October twenty-fifth to be Space Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. If you don't know, Pittsburgh is becoming a space city, and as we think about our identity as a city that's evolving over time, a natural future story for ourselves is to think of ourselves as, as a space city. So we're really proud to be part of that. Spaceburg as a festival and the Keystone Space Collaborative is really putting Pittsburgh on the map in the industry, and I want to thank everybody here who's participated in bringing this to, to light. Also want to say really quickly that when we think about ourselves moving forward, space is the bringer of hope and optimism. It's the great unifier of all of humanity. And when we think about what we're doing here in Pittsburgh to make that real, it's just something that I'm really proud of, and I think we in this city should be very proud of as well. So, thank you.
Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council, if any is not permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Santiago, Chile, GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org, member of the American Political Science Association, early two thousands, Global Intelligence Society candidate for President, two thousand and twenty-four. Twenty million wobbly embarrassed DPs, plus twenty million wobbly RPs, plus forty million eligible voters equals eighty million wedge. A concern of council is the vote. This is chaos here, elsewhere, everywhere in the United States. The two thousand and twenty-four vote for U.S. American President is not secure, neither in Pittsburgh City, Allegheny County, nor in all other U.S. American cities and counties. One, the vote for President is chaos. We, the people, need VVVFW. Vote by voter verification for whom? Copyright RLM. VVVFW enables a voter to check for misplacement or misapplication of her or his vote. Two, without VVVFW currently, the Pittsburgh City and U.S. American country vote is vitiated by voidance, void, and vanishment, van. Three, projections hypothetical show Patenci, Asian New Hongo DP Harris, and Laife, African House RP Trump, coming together but ending apart. Probability is greater than point nine in poll voting, reasonable actual, at one hundred thousand, similar to the nineteen sixty, one hundred twelve thousand separating DP JFK and RP RMN. That one hundred thousand is still in dispute. Countrywide vote parameters are three hundred max van and void mean, one hundred min mean. Therefore, countrywide vote productions are high at nine hundred thousand van void and low at three hundred thousand van void for three thousand one hundred forty-three U.S. American counties. Four, vote voidance, vote vanishment, four point one. Vote voidance variables, four point one, point one, void variables, mail-in. One, vote form partialized. Two, vote form is a photocopy. Three, voter non-black ink use. Four, voter signature absent. Five, voter did not put on postage. Four point one, point two, void variables in person. Vote recording program, VRP, one ignores valid voter ID. Two invalidates the whole vote. Three indicates voter in but not out. And four, designifies a start-over for VRP. I will continue this tomorrow, but I urge the Supreme Court of the United States to change the date from five November to fifteen December because there is violence coming.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Sonia Saylor. Is Sonia Saylor with us? If not, we'll move on to those in chambers wishing to speak. If there are members, if there are residents in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Also provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Stanley Andrew Lowe. I live in the Manchester section of Pittsburgh, and the last time I was here, I told you I was seventy-four years of age. I will say that every time I speak because there are many years behind me that don't have left moving forward. Number one rule for me is focus. Focus. I know that I've had the opportunity to hear from no one since the last time I was here, and I have no expectation in the future to hear from anyone here. However, I'm going to state my case as plainly as I can. I've lived in Manchester for seventy-four years. Today, the City of Pittsburgh is receiving a proposal for over six hundred million dollar development going next to Pittsburgh's largest black African-American historic district in western Pennsylvania. Manchester residents have not had a community meeting, in-house community meeting, in two and a half years. This proposal does not offer any community benefits plan. There has not been one affordable housing unit built in Manchester in the last ten years. The cost of housing in Manchester now exceeds two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The average cost of housing in the City of Pittsburgh is two hundred and nine thousand dollars. East Liberty is gone. East Liberty is no longer a majority-black neighborhood. Given the numbers in terms of what it costs to live in Manchester, we're posed to be next. We're posed to be next. There is a threat to a majority-black neighborhood in Manchester if you do that. I just mentioned six hundred million dollars for the Expana project. That does not include the overall cost of two billion dollars of development that is currently surrounding that neighborhood. No affordable housing. Manchester plans started in two thousand and nineteen, first priority in two thousand and nineteen called for affordable housing, yet not one unit has been built. Not one unit. I suspect this will be probably my last breath of community action, but it's okay. It's okay. The reason it's okay is because I know what happened in Georgetown. I know what happened in predominantly black neighborhoods that are overrun by powerful people and with lots of money, and there is no plan whatsoever, none, to make sure Manchester stays a majority-black neighborhood, or even a neighborhood of low to moderate income. Oh, by the way, the Expanar Plan, yes, twenty percent affordable housing, great. That's sixty units with eighty percent of the median income, eighty thousand dollars for a family of four, seventy-two thousand dollars for a family of three. This is insanity. This is absolute insanity. You expect a black neighborhood to survive given those statistics? I'm gonna stay focused, y'all. I'm gonna stay focused.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sam Gibson, and I represent Homewood. And I come here because it's strangely that I'm here today, and I look at you guys. I come here for two topics. One is I want to explain to you all what happened to me on the sixth of October. I got, I'm gonna use the words that you all's police force used, brutally attacked by a police officer. So I want to say this, and I want you all to understand the reason why I'm here. We put these organizations together. We pay our own money. We pay for all the license tree and everything to make this happen. Every day, ten toes down, I'm in this community, and I make stuff happen for people who are underserved, organizations who need help, homeless who needs a meal. I make it happen. I can't talk about anybody else, but I'm gonna talk about what it is that I do. A police officer, you all's mayor, has said that they need help because we are under the number of police officers for the street. So as nonprofit organizations come into this, this bargaining process that happens, we give you all a service. You all don't financially help us, but we always giving ourselves, giving ourselves with no support. For me, for this to happen to a person who has been doing this for the last past twenty years, volunteering my time, coming up, helping, and if you all don't know who I am, check my track record. I help without any of you all's support from the City of Pittsburgh. Any support of the City of Pittsburgh. This is not fear, and all I'm asking for you all to do is, if we are all out here representing services that the mayor's office is asking, you all's offices are asking for us to come apart the community and help out when we're so short-staffed on police, there's no reason why I should be getting my behinds arrested, my arm twisted to the back of my neck, my leg slammed indoors, me being called out of my name, me being told I think I'm a, I, I know I'm a, I can't cuss in here. This is not healthy. And I'm being honest with you. So if I'm not a part of the clique, I'm gonna start putting you on call. All nine of you all's, this blood is on you all's hands, and if you don't do something, that's you all's fault. I'll see you all tomorrow because I got something else to say to you all. I got three minutes, but I appreciate you all, and I'm asking you all, please, there should be some time, some form of identification, something for all these communities, all these organizations that's out here in these communities, helping. We're not all a part of the clique, but we're all out here doing something. We're all out here trying to make a change because we're short-staffed. As a whole, we're short-staffed, and we're, we're the best lovable city in the world.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at seven fifteen Mercer Street. That's in Katy, Katy River's tires. That's the building at the top of Beffert. I was saying here that John Sessnick, I'm not, I'm not pronouncing his name right, but the one that does the elevators that he passed, and I asked one of the staff if you had made any kind of announcement, you know, because I'll tell you that John was my friend. You may not know that, but he was a good man. And there's another thing I would like to tell you. This elevator has been down for how long? I live in Katy River Irvis, and their elevator was, is old, old model like this, and we had a young black man that fixed that elevator, and you can hardly hear it running now. If you, one of you should, or whoever was in charge of John, should call Arbor Tires and ask for the name of the company that fixed their elevators, because this is the city, this is the city, and look at this for months. You know, that's really, it really looks bad. Another thing is this, I've been coming down here for years, and the disrespect that I received from you and the different things that you have done to, to me, I felt on the computer, on your tablet, sitting over, or go over there and get on the phone with our three minutes. Now you got people at home that's speaking, and they don't know that you're doing that. That's some of the problem why I would be really disturbed and really depressed. You're very depressing to me, but there is a God, and you know why I say that? My eleven-year-old granddaughter was telling me that the teacher is just picking boys for the honor guard, and she was saying, Grandma, the boys are bad, they're disrespectful, and so on. Well, she wrote a petition. It looks like a note, but here she had wrote down that they were rude, disrespectful, and crude. She also wrote down that there are other people that they could pick. Then on the back is where they all signed. Now my little granddaughter that's eight, you know how she get kind of jealous. She took, she's the one that put these holes in and scratched up the back, but she's got forty-nine yeses. She went to all the kids, forty-nine yeses, just a couple no's, and I think one teacher signed. But I want to tell yens, I'm old and I'm getting tired of yens, but I got a grandbaby. She's on her way. Eleven years old and can do a petition for the rights of all. She said all should be respected. All. You get the same ones, and they're bad. I said, well, maybe they're trying because people don't pick them, and maybe they felt if they did pick them, they would act better. She said, no, Grandma, they fight the girls, they're mean, and, and she writes disrespectful. So yens, please follow, listen to my grandbaby, and me too sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. Who is Deborah Neal Hadnot? FBI, please find this person. It may be me. Wouldn't that be amazing? A hadnot. The person who gave me this name, number, address, seven oh forty-eight and a half Bennett Street, told me that was her name, but that's not her real name. Lord, here's a proverb. Proverbs ten fifteen, it says, "The wealth of the rich is their fortress; the poverty of the poor is their destruction." Now, all of y'all could put all y'all money together, and a lot of people would think that y'all were rich. Really? But our poverty is gonna be y'all's destruction, and y'all gonna have to come out here with us. All forty-seven thousand plus of us that are homeless in this state, y'all gonna have to come out here with us. Because the Lord giveth and the Lord taketh away. If you're not ready for the takeaway, please get ready because it's coming. I return the sender any voodoo death rituals, hexes, or curses sent towards me, one hundred million, billion, trillion guglex, and whoever sending it, Lord, throw them into a lake of fire. I return any, I return the sender any evil eye sent towards me to go permanently blind in Jesus' name, and whoever sending it, throw them into a lake of fire as well. Nobody should look at anybody with evil eye. Like, really, nobody. If you have a problem with anybody, go to the mirror and look at yourself because there's something about yourself that you don't like, and it took me a long time to get that. But when I went to the mirror, I changed a lot. I dug deep because I had to because of this situation that I find myself in, and when the truth comes out, a lot of people are gonna be held accountable for whatever part they played in it. I'm not saving nobody from going to prison. Nobody. I promise you, I'm not. I forgive everybody. I don't hate nobody, but whatever part you played in this heinous betrayal, even knowing about it, you be, you will be held accountable. First Corinthians sixteen nine says, "A wide door has been opened to me, and with it are many adversaries." Whatever this opportunity is that's coming towards me, there's a lot of people that don't want me to have it, and they've done a lot to block me from it. It's going as far as my communication, hacking my Gmail accounts, making sure I get no communication. Now, if the court is trying to communicate with me, please communicate with me directly. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I want to return to proclamations. There were two that need to be read into the record.
Councilman Sharlin presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to be City Theater Company's Young Playwrights Festival Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presents. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Lou Martin and congratulate him for twenty-five years in the ring, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to be Lou Martin Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That'll move us on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 1031, Resolution Amending Resolution 912 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with ESRI, granting uncapped, citywide access to ESRI's products, including ARC GIS velocity for all departments. This will allow the city to build and maintain an authoritative system of record. Expanding access to this system of record will enable the city to make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, and perform advanced analytics. It will also share information with the public, meeting the needs of the city of Pittsburgh, by increasing the approved amount by $800,625 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,950,625 over seven years. Bill 1032, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Information Technologies Services for AV Installation Services with Cable Management for citywide conference rooms with recommended equipment for a total cost not to exceed $68,455 over one year. And Bill 1033, Resolution Amending Resolution 378 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a Fifth Amendment to Cooperation and Project Agreement for the creation and operation of the Regional Data Center Agreement with Allegheny County and the University of Pittsburgh, with the city and county providing funding for the university's work for the Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center by increasing the approved amount by $300,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $765,000 each over nine years.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Cory Mosley presents Bill 1034, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 707 Grant Street at no cost to the city. Bill 1035, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for Professional Services relating to the deployment and management of mobile restrooms at various locations throughout the municipality at a cost not to exceed $600,000 over two years. And Bill 1036, Resolution Authorizing the dissolution of the Somerset at Frick Park Tax Increment Financing District, Council District 5.
And Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 1013, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $10,000 Within the 2024 Operating Budget From City Council Salaries and Wages Regular to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive or wait, so it appears on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The bill will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 1037, Resolution Providing the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales. Items A through T. 2007 DeRod Street, Council District Number 6. 2003 Wyandotte Street, Council District 6. 5377 Warble Street, Council District 9. 5379 Warble Street, Council District 9. 4937 Rosetta Street, Council District 9. 557 Lenora Street, Council District 9. 6824 Kelly Street, Council District 9. 623 Hale Street, Council District 9. 621 Hale Street, Council District 9. Zero Hale Street, Council District 9. 617 Hale Street, Council District 9. 242 Johnston, Johnston Avenue, Council District 5. 844 Excelsior Street, Council District 3. 1114 Arlington Avenue, Council District 3. 125 Millbridge Street, Council District 3. 212 Attica Street, Council District 2. 1122 Liverpool Street, Council District 6. 1234 Butterfield Way, Council District 1. 17 Plow Street, Council District 1. 1149 Margray Street, Council District 5. Bill 1038, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale But to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program. Items A through K. 2804 Webster Avenue, Council District 6. 3508 Ridgeway Street, Council District 6. Zero Deary Street, Council District 9. 902 Lacston Street, Council District 9. 420 St. Joseph Street, Council District 3. 1311 Itton Street, Council District 1. 1313 Itton Street, Council District 1. 1300 Voskamp Street, Council District 1. 32 Wasner Avenue, Council District 1. 3034 Viola Street, Council District 1. Zero Orchard Place, Council District 3. 1039, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 237 of 2021 to Provide for the Extension of a Professional Services Agreement Through June 30th, 2026 with Zeo Technologies for Costs Associated with the Provision of Web Hosting Services for the City Controller's Office at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $26,250. And Bill 1048, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, December 28th, 2017, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Children's Museum by $5,000 and Increasing Northside Youth Athletic Association by $2,500 and Friendship Circle by $2,500 and Authorize Subsequent
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 1040, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with Safe Roots Partnership for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Grant in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,000 to Support the City's Ruby Bridges Walk to School Event.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
May, Mr. President.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 1041, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements Between the City of Pittsburgh and Upstream PGH for the Installation and Maintenance of a Community-Led Public Art Installation Located at 8229 Breisland Street at No Cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1042, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application Under the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning, Article 5, Chapter 911, Section 911.04.8.72 to Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, Property Owner, for Utility General Use to Construct a New Pump Station at 7853 Lockway East, Parcel 122L50. Zoned Riverfront Industrial Mixed Use, 11th and 12th Ward, Ward's Council District Number 7 and 9.
Thank you, and I have four communications.
Councilman Ordaniel Lovell presents Bill 1043, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on Behalf of the Mayor's Office for Paul Scott Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. Bill 1044, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation from E-approval to the Department of Public Safety in the Form of Donated Furniture Valued at a Price Not to Exceed $1,001.42. Bill 1045, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended October 11th, 2024. And Bill 1046, Communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, Submitting a Special Report on the Pittsburgh Public Schools Board of Directors Dated October 8th, 2024.
We have a motion to read, receive, and file on all four communications.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills have been read, received, and filed. Our next order of business is reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 1026, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for October 9th, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 7, Bill 973, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Summers, McDonald, Houdak, Guthrie, and Roche in an Amount Not to Exceed $60,000 over one year for Legal Services Related to Pending Litigation Involving City Employees. Bill 975, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, Effective December 23rd, 2019, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Community Improvement Program by Decreasing West Ohio Street Bridge Tip by $75,000 and Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $75,000. Bill 976, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27th, 2021, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund Tip by $26,898 and Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $26,898. Bill 977, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, Effective December 27th, 2022, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Private, by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund Tip by $120,650, Reducing Parking Lot Bridge at Woodriff Street Tip by $2,000, and Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $122,650. Bill 978, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, Effective December 27th, 2023, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund Tip by $127,950, Reducing Parking Lot Bridge at Woodriff Street Tip by $5,000, and Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $132,950. Bill 979, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales. Items A through AC. 3033 Center Avenue, Council District 6. 5511 Broad Street, Council District 9. 6407 Dean Street, Council District 9. 6414 Dean Street, Council District 9. 6412 Dean Street, Council District 9. 6410 Council, 6410 Dean Street, Council District 9. 603 Lincoln Avenue, Council District 9. 916 Garrett Street, Council District 9. 914 Garrett Street, Council District 9. 913 North Mertland Street, Council District 9. 7036 Bennett Street, Council District 9. 7034 Bennett Street, Council District 9. 818 through 820 Oakwood Street, Council District 9. 1 Oakwood Place, Council District 9. 560 Sickles Street, Council District 9. 568 Sickles Street, Council District 9. 4613 Chatsworth Street, Council District 5. 126 Manson Street, Council District 5. Zero Manson Street, Council District 5. 240 Renner Street, Council District 5. 203 Kingsborough Street, Council District 3. Zero Paul Street, Council District 2. 2662 Glasgow Street, Council District 2. 22 Conestoga Street, Council District 2. 27 Conestoga Street, Council District 2. 2023 Mountford Avenue, Council District 6. 3580 Elmhurst Avenue, Council District 1. Zero Charles Street, Council District 3. 410 Rochelle Street, Council District 3. Bill 980, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program. Items A through I. Zero Webster Avenue, Council District 6. Zero Webster Avenue, Council District 6. 408 North Matilda Street, Council District 9. 6739 Atwell Street, Council District 9. 5 Tecumseh Street, Council District 5. 400 Marlowe Street, Council District 2. 29 Conestoga Street, Council District 2. 1022 High Street, Council District 1. Zero Holbrook, Holbrook Street, Council District 1. And Bill 981, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 620 of 2016, Effective Date, October 21st, 2016, in Order to Rescind the Sale.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 1027, Report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for October 9th, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 969, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Astrophysics, Inc., for X-ray Machine Maintenance and Warranty Services at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $32,075 over five years. Bill 970, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Hundred Public Safety, Inc., Doing Business as Performance Protocol to Identify and Implement Solutions to Further Improve Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Recruitment and Retention Efforts at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $38,172 over one year.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a lead required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 1028, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for October 9th, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 982, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Purpose of for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Safe Streets for All Grant Program in the amount not to exceed one million, three hundred twenty thousand dollars to conduct a road safety audit of up to ten high-injury corridors, develop a Vision Zero-focused Complete Streets Design Manual, and deploy three demonstration projects. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the amount not to exceed one hundred thirty thousand dollars and a match from Carnegie Mellon University in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for this stated purpose for a total project cost of one million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill ten twenty-nine, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Ass- Asset Management and Technology for October ninth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation, Bill nine seventy-one, resolution amending Resolution Number seven sixty-four of two thousand twenty-three, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to extend a professional services agreement with S.T.R. Grants LLC for software services relating to the E. Properties Plus Profiling System by extending the term by one year at an additional cost not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Bill ten oh eight, resolution amending Resolution six thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-four, effective September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Matrix Point Software LLC in an amount not to exceed three hundred, ten thousand dollars over six years for software, professional support, and related training services related to litigation case management for the city's Department of Law by updating the applicable code account.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Good. Aye.
Uh, Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, that takes us to Councilman Kahari Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill ten thirty, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October ninth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation, Bill nine seventy-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to reimburse expenses of PWSA incurred for block stone to cr- to concrete street conversion performed by PWSA for the restoration in Elliott Project at an amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and nine cents.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just want to thank PWSA for working through this issue. It was, uh, street resurfacing, or they were replacing lines in Elliott, and there were three roads with, um, a pitch of like seventeen percent of a hill, and the grade is really high, and so, um, it was all cobblestone. So they said that they could do this, uh, make all these streets concrete. It was one issue after another. I want to thank you for also, Councilwoman, uh, Strasburger, for, um, also talking with me a little bit about this. Uh, but they were able to, they're able to give us a, almost a fifty-year guarantee on three of these roads. So it's, it's better for the community, and it's actually better for the city. But I also want to thank Brian Rolston, uh, for his help on this, and Domi for their help, and, uh, everyone who helped work, work through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yes, I'd like to, uh, call for a post-agenda on, um, fair housing and zoning for community homes.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with you to get that scheduled. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Councilwoman Smith?
Yeah, I, and there's been a lot going on all weekend. I just want to make the public aware of a couple of things. Um, I sent out a letter, everybody knows I sent out a letter, uh, to my constituents because I wrote legislation, um, and I wanted to make sure they were aware of why my legislation was important. So I had to talk a little bit about, um, some of the things that were coming forward, uh, with other legislation, how there was, there was a conflict. But I want the public to know, and I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick for really yesterday, uh, and over the past few days, making some phone calls and trying to make sure that, um, we get to a better place with this, because I think everybody was kind of surprised with it. I was actually surprised with the outcome of it because I was getting phone calls myself across the city. But this is so important to the City of Pittsburgh that we do this and do this right. And I think that, uh, so today, I just want to let people know that Councilwoman Warwick, Jake Pollack, and I do have a meeting right after this meeting before the public hearing, but the public hearing is still very important because they're going to make either a recommendation to, um, approve my legislation, or positive recommendation for council to vote it up or down, or a negative to vote it down. And if you, they give us a negative recommendation, it takes seven votes to overturn that. So it's important for the public to know why this meeting is so important, because it's challenging to get that many votes for, for something so significant. Um, but I want people to understand that we're not, you know, we definitely want to do a lot of work, and we want to do a lot of things to help the people in our, our city that are struggling the most. I think we've seen what the effects of poor management of facilities has done in places like downtown Pittsburgh and other places. We've seen good effect, I mean, some people don't even know they have a property next to them because they're managed so well. And I think that's the issue right there, is that we have to make sure resources are coming to people, that they're managed well, and that the, these things don't just affect the people outside of the facility, they affect people being treated inside the facility. Because sometimes we, and we had one in our district where people were attacked on the inside, and employees wouldn't even go in to help the people because it was so bad inside and so unsafe. That's not okay. We want places where kids and people that have to live in facilities or, um, temporary housing, that they're safe. And so to pretend that we're doing anything other than doing what's best for this, the region and making all these insinuations, accusations, first of all, we're not out of, we're not out of compliance with the Fair Housing Act. That's the most important part people need to understand. I mean, I even heard an elected official on TV yesterday say, we just need to follow the fair housing. Well, find out with the facts, or, and what I tell people to do is read the bill. Read the bill and watch the meetings. The meetings are televised. The first meeting, they were told that there was a concern that we were out of compliance. The second meeting, they admitted that there was, that we were not out of compliance. That, those are things we need to work through, and, and our communications is something that we need to work through with the public. Bottom line is, I want the public to know, my colleagues, Council President Lavelle, if you had not sustained my, my opportunity to have my legislation processed first, we wouldn't even have the opportunity to have this, have a meeting with the public beforehand. So I want people to understand council is working with us to do what's best in, in the city, in the interest of the City of Pittsburgh and all people, whether they're housed, unhoused, uh, have special needs, or, or, or whatever the case, case may be. I just, but we also are looking out for the residents of the City of Pittsburgh as a whole. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for members? Councilman Coghill?
Uh, you're right, your letter did stir up a lot of conversations over the week.
Well, wait, I'm a really good organizer. Wait until, if they make me mad, just see next.
My office has been peppered with phone calls. And really, Councilwoman Kell Smith, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. Um, you know, it's obviously struck a nerve with a lot of people. Uh, I look forward to having the conversations with the Planning Commission to steer this in the right direction. So I just wanted to thank you for stepping up in your leadership and putting that letter out. I thought you put it out to my entire district, but it seems to have gotten onto everybody in my district one way or the other, but, uh, I'm glad that you did it, and I support you wholeheartedly in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for members? If not, just a further point of clarification, because as of this morning, my office was getting more calls regarding it, and I just want to make sure the public is aware that currently your bill is before the Planning Commission and will be come back and be before city council. In your letter, you pointed out issues of concern with the fair housing bill. That bill is currently not before city council. Um, and I just want to clarify that for the public, and just ensure the public that if and when it does come before city council, there will certainly be a full, robust, substantive, long engagement on that bill, so.
Yeah, can I just make one, one point of clarity? I want to say that, correct, fair housing laws are not before us currently, but they were approved by city planning.
Correct.
And recommended to us. So as soon as my legislation is exhausted, they can come forward.
Correct.
So I do want the public to understand that there is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Anything else for members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October sixteenth at nine thirty, council will hold a pre-agenda interview at ten a.m. During our standing committee meeting, speaker registration will close at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, Wednesday afternoon at two p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill eight forty-six as relates to Schimmy Heights Pavilion. Registration closes at twelve thirty, the day of the hearing. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. By the deadline, you may also call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty-one thirty-eight. And then lastly, on Thursday, October seventeenth at two thirty, two o'clock, excuse me, council will hold a briefing on the fair housing zoning amendments. Councilwoman, uh, Strasburger?